Hello, everybody. Welcome to another edition of Conversations. Today, we have sort of a roundtable discussion on a rectangle table. Okay, and we have longtime Bedford County resident Joe Finch. Mr. Finch, you've been here a long time. You've been here since you was 11 years old. And I'm not going to say how many years you've been here actually, but you can tell us.
Sixty plus.
Sixty plus years, okay? So you've been around these parts for a while. We also have Mr. Eric Mack, Commissioner of District One here in Bedford County. And you've been here for 10 years or longer.
Yes, sir.
Been a commissioner now for a couple of years. And of course, Josh, everybody knows Josh Levins and myself. I'm David Thomas. And we're going to just start out talking about the condition or the certain position that we're in with our Bedford County government. I know us four sitting around here are concerned about it. We have concerns for our citizens because obviously, as a commissioner, you represent the citizens of Bedford County. And we have 17 other commissioners that represent Bedford Countyans. And our government is for the people, by the people. So I have, starting a conversation that way. We had a situation with our last county commission meeting that kind of got off the rails. And I'm just going to open the floor up. And I'm going to start, Joe, since you're right in front of me. I know you spoke and you made your concerns known there about how things were being done.
I'm obviously concerned. If you notice what I said when I spoke, one of the things I said was I was really concerned about the bundle.
Right.
The way they bundled all the projects together. They tied it with a project that everybody wanted, which was Liberty School. I think there would have been 18-0 if they'd have voted that separately. And then they stuck in some projects that might be necessary, but some of them seemed like just things that we'd like to have.
Right.
And that wasn't emergency, didn't need them right now. I wasn't so concerned about the projects individually as I was at how they put them together. And I went, if you want to go back to when we had the big 18% tax increase.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I went up that night as well. And I was there when they voted on that. And I noticed that there's a certain group that vote and they vote together. They usually have a leader and that guy's going to make the motion. They're going to control the amendments. And I noticed who was doing that that night. I watched that. You're going up to where we talked about a wheel tax. I noticed who was doing that, who was pushing those. I noticed how they went about it. They wanted to cut off all discussion as quickly as they could. There was a vote one time on one of those. I don't remember which one. They didn't even have discussion and they moved to stop discussion.
Right.
Before they ever had a discussion. So basically, the meetings are working to where there's half of the commissioners that seem to all be set before they get to the meeting. So it's pretty well determined. I told my wife before we left during the storm the other night. I said, you want me to tell you how the vote's going to come out? Guess how it came out, exactly how I said it.
Exactly.
I said, you want me to tell you who's going to vote for what? Guess how it came out, exactly like I told her. I know who was going to vote for. Now, if I knew that, I'm sure they knew that. But the biggest problem that I have this bundling is the precedent that they set back here. Where they bypass the rules, they slip in this, guys head it up. They have it all set before they get there. And it's done and half of Bedford County is not represented because their guys don't get, they're not in on the no until it's done.
Right, it's over and done.
It's over and done with. And you could tell it was planned. I mean, you know, I don't know how they went about doing that. I'm not a legislator, so I don't know. But I do know that it was done and it was set. And if, as a layperson in this county with not inside knowledge, if I could pick out how the vote was going to be and who was going to vote for what.
Right.
I guess it'd be pretty easy for those guys before they got to the meeting to know that. But when you start doing an omnibus bill, I think it started back here with these guys voting and being able to push stuff through on their own without, really without any discussion, decision. I mean, there was some, but it was useless. It was, you know, you couldn't really do anything. Goes all the way through till now. It gets a little deeper this time.
Yeah.
I was really disappointed. I was sad, I was disappointed. And I felt bad for the taxpayers of Bedford County.
Yeah.
I love this county.
Yeah.
Never wanted to leave it. I got out of school, got out of college, I never wanted to leave. But now I look at how it's working and I'm beginning to really be concerned. I was concerned back here, I'm really concerned now. Because when you put all your, I don't know if you want to call them pet projects, your like to help projects, whatever, in with a needed project. And you're going to have to vote one time up or down. And you know, and there's somebody there that wants to stop the discussion. They want to stop, they want to bypass the committees. Those committees were set up for a very good reason. They're supposed to do the research, they're supposed to do the background, get the bids, do the things that they should do. So they know when they come to the finance committee with a recommendation, there's some facts to back up their recommendation. Well, now you just bypass all that and go right to the finance committee and right to the vote. And he said, and if I understood the resolution, and Eric, you can help me understand this. I'm not a lawyer, so I read that resolution. It seemed to me that now that they've got $10.4 million, that they wouldn't necessarily have to spend that individually on those numbers that we had the other night.
That's a good question. I believe, well, first of all, thank you for being here. Thank you for the invite. I'm, you know, I want to state this publicly that I sincerely appreciate what Shelbyville Now is doing to inform the public. I believe that there are many sources that you can look to for news. And I also believe wholeheartedly that you guys are putting out the truth as it pertains to the facts, and I really appreciate that. And I will also say to you, Mr. Finch, thank you for all that you do. You represented what a lot of us felt the other night well, as well as many other people. You represented, you represented a large constituency. And that's one of my concerns also. You know, to somewhat answer your question, that $10.4 million, one of the main objections that I have is it's my understanding that there is only one solid bid.
Right.
That's been accomplished. So we're going to borrow money and we really don't know the whole package. You know, and that's another reason why I feel that debate and discussion is important. Because it allows everyone involved. And when I say everyone involved, that involves from the constituents, the citizens of the community. Well, it just so happens that those folks go to the polls and they elect people to represent their best interest. So the job of the folks that are elected is to go out and solicit the input from the constituents and to garner their feedback and then help make the right decision. And those decisions are made, as per our bylaws, in committees. We have committees set up to help address issues, topics. It actually is set up in a way to where, you know, those topics can then come out of those committees and go to the commission to be voted on overall by the commission. You know, it's no secret, I said it the other night, that one of my concerns is simply the fact that, in my opinion, it seemed that that process was broken. I did raise a concern to our chairman of the Rules Committee, Mr. Commissioner Farrer. And I believe that, quite frankly, he did an amazing job articulating the concerns.
I really appreciate what he said.
Yeah, he gave an opportunity at that point to get things corrected.
Yes.
And Josh, you've dug into these committees and the rules and all that. And I mean, basically, sitting there, you were present. I was watching online, I was, we livestreamed that particular meeting. What did you get from that meeting? When you walked away and said, what was the main theme? What really could, what happened? I mean, what, in your opinion?
I mean, the thing that concerned me most was even the quote unquote debate was not a debate. It was a single commissioner laying out their concerns, many of which raised questions in their statement. And there were no answers. Nobody came back and answered the questions that Commissioner Farrer, he listed some questions, some concerns with rules. I mean, we had the county attorney there. He didn't say, hey, we're in the rules, we're out of the rules. We didn't have, anybody from the finance committee stood up and said, hey, here's why we did it this way, laid out. We just had people speaking at other people. Debate should be back and forth, discussion, you know? And there was none of that. It was, you know, here's my opinion, oh, let's go on to the next guy. Here's his opinion, oh, let's go to the next guy. Here's his opinion. But nobody was back and forth having. And it's kind of hard in that room with 18 people, a full audience, to have that kind of debate. That's why you have the subcommittees where you've got just four or five commissioners up front. And actual conversation goes on in those. If you've ever been to those subcommittee meetings, it's more like a conversation, you're in a smaller room, there's back and forth. You could, I don't speak up at those, but if you're just a normal citizen, you're in one of those meetings. Most of those committee chairman will let you talk, even not in the public comment period. If you had something relevant to say, you can just raise your hand and speak up and they'll listen to you.
Yeah, one thing, I was watching this and somebody that was in the room watching it. And the minute that that resolution was brought up and the screaming, the automatic, I make a motion without being recognized, that person said, that just went off the rails. And that's the way we describe it in our wrap-up. And I thought that set the tone, and the tone was not good from that point. I think when you get a group of people, predominantly Christian people in a room, there should be some civil discussion and respect for one another. And that was out the window.
I didn't see that.
I know, that's what concerned me more than anything else. Because that body represents not only the constituents, but Bedford County as a whole.
Absolutely.
And it concerned me.
Yeah, it certainly is concerning. I'll also mention that, you know, just as Mr. Finch mentioned, there is a perception that there is a divide. And it's sad, it's disheartening, it's disappointing, it's discouraging. I believe that ultimately, all 18 commissioners and our county mayor, we all work together for the same people. And we should all have the best interests of the people that we serve at heart. And when there is a divide there, it seems to start to garner more questions. Why is there a divide? You know, there's something in business called the five whys. You continue to ask the question, why, until you get to the recalls. And that's my pledge to the people of this county is that I am going to ask those questions. And I would hope that other commissioners would do the exact same thing to try to figure out, you know, what's going on, why are we here? What are we voting on, what's the reason for it? So, you know, we just have to make sure everyone's informed.
As I was watching that thing, I felt like that there was an element of fear also with some commissioners that were sitting there. You know, like they were afraid to say anything. Did y'all notice that at all?
They were intimidated.
Okay.
That's what I thought. Someone on the, someone on the commission, I think, intimidated some of the other folks. Because I don't know how to get there without saying some names, but I don't want to go personal. But if you noticed, one of the commissioners held up his hand and said, you know, I'd like to ask a question. But it was almost like, is it okay if I ask a question about this? And then, you know, and then they basically said, well, if you do that, you'll start all over. And you see what I'm talking about? A couple of times, people kind of wanted to say something and it was like, I'm going to get in real trouble if I do, or somebody's going to be mad at me if I do.
Yeah. One commissioner in particular that I know personally that was headed down the right path toward maybe deferring.
Right.
And all of a sudden, it twisted. It turned, went the opposite direction. And I thought that, you know, this is going to be our solution.
Right.
And then when I saw it turn, it just, what, how does this get fixed, guys? I mean, what do we have to do?
I think it starts with, you know, transparency. That's a word that I started using immediately. And then it was, it's used more and more, it seems. But I believe ultimately, it just boils down to transparency. So you would say, well, what do you mean in this situation? I think that open discussion and debate out in a public setting, like the committees, it just, it clears it up. It allows commissioners that may have opposing views on certain things to talk it out. And not only talk it out, but they're talking it out in a public setting. And it would, and things that happened, like it happened the other night, would not happen. What you all saw was an explosion. It was an explosion that should not have taken place. When we all entered into that room, there were many of us that knew that, you know what? We would absolutely support the Liberty School wing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. We knew that, you know, I would absolutely, I support law enforcement 100%. Now, am I frustrated because that particular item did not go through the law enforcement committee? I am. And I've had a conversation with leadership. And after I had that conversation with this individual in leadership, I better understood it and I would support it. The extension on the Ag Center, same thing, I would support it. These other things I have.
I think most everybody would.
I have major questions on these things. So not to rehash it, but if we would just take these things individually and work through it, we would not have been in the place that we were in the other night. And the perception again, in my opinion, is that it was pushed through. You'll notice that when this resolution was read, there was an immediate call for the question. Even in that setting, I was very disappointed to see that because it even there, it shut down or attempted to shut down any debate that would take place. So when that happens, those of us that do have concerns about these things, my thought was, well, this is my last opportunity to talk about this before it becomes on a vote. So I've got to get all this out. So, yeah, it's definitely, it was definitely concerning, to say the least.
Yeah, Josh, from, again, from your viewpoint, you were there as sort of a reporter, trying to gather all the facts and everything. Is there any one particular instance that jumped out at you that you thought, wow, this is headed in the wrong direction? Was it the very, right out of the gate?
I mean, it started out of the gate in the wrong direction, it didn't ever get turned around. I honestly, I was impressed most by when Commissioner Farrer laid out his, his, you know, plan to clean the whole thing up. It had gotten off the rails to begin with. He was concise, he was clear. He's like, let's clean this up, here's how we can do this. Everybody leaves out of here happy, Liberty School gets voted on. The other things go to committees. None of these other things are urgent. And, I mean, they haven't even had a bid, how urgent can they be? I mean, and he wasn't talking about pushing them off for 12 months. He said, you know, let's talk about them in committee in a couple of weeks and come back and vote on them next month. And that seemed like a reasonable request. And that's honestly why we put out the clutch photos we did. Because you had nine people that said, we don't want to hear what you've got to say. I mean, he's a commissioner that most of them would say they respect. That's why he's the chairman of the Rules Committee.
He's been there longer than anybody that's on the commission.
Yeah, he knows how things are done. And how can you, you know, vote against what seems to be a fairly reasonable?
Respect, yeah. To me, it went out the window.
Right.
When he spoke and, you know, he got his idea out there. But it was just like disrespect to him completely, I thought.
And as we talked about during our weekend wrap-up, there was never any debate of his amendment. They did not allow the rest of the commissioners to weigh in and say, hey, I think that's a good idea. Or, hey, I don't, here's why I think it's a good idea, here's why I don't. Which should have happened, you know, based on Robert.
Do you guys feel like that there's an attitude that we know more than anybody else? Or do you think it's just disrespect? Or do you think it's, we're going to do? What do you think motivates this type of activity taking place?
Well, I don't know if I'm an expert on what motivates it or not.
From my outside, I look at it.
Looking in, I think there's two or three things. One, I think it's hard to go against your boss. I don't know how to say that any other way. There's a lot of people tied in to the county as far as their living.
Right.
And it would be hard for me in a meeting, a public meeting, to go against my boss if I knew what he wanted.
Right.
I think the desires of many of those people were communicated some way prior to that meeting. I just got that feeling. I expected somebody to come in and say, we want to build a fine range and the recommendation from the law enforcement committee was unanimous and we want to do this and it's out here and our bid is such and such. Or we wanted to build juvenile detention, it was property, you know, the committee and the recommendations to the finance committee and it's going to cost this because we've got to be. We didn't see any of that. We just saw, we want the whole thing or nothing. And I really didn't like that at all. I think the motivation for that, I actually talked to different commissioners there separately.
Right.
Basically, the only thing that I got out of it was, well, if we didn't do it that way, we might not have got all those in. Well, okay. I mean, you know, to me, there's a couple of things. When I, I'm 73. So there's things in my life that I'm doing right now that I, when I was 25, I wouldn't do because I was trying to save up for when I got 73. I'm not going to spend money at this time because I got money here. I think that's another thing that motivates some of the commissioners. It's either their last run or maybe the next of their last run because of their age. I'm not, look, I'm not knocking old people, I'm glad to be there. Hey, I'm glad to be one. But I think they feel like, like you said, this is my last shot. I'm either going to get my project in or it's never going to happen. I think that's part of the motivation. I think part of it is we're connected in here and we need to vote with everybody else because we're part of the, I don't know. On the street, they say the courthouse crowd. You can say it any way you want to. But, you know, there's a group, an elite group, I think, that does believe that they know what this county needs to be and it doesn't really matter what the county people think. That we're going to do what we want to do and we're going to get it done. And the means, the end justifies the means, in their opinion. And when you were talking about perceptive, the perception, I don't know if you noticed, the very last thing I was going to talk about was perception. I talked to Scott Johnson, I was telling him what his daddy said about perception's reality. I ran out of time talking like I do, too slowly. But, but the perception in the communities, and I'm talking about lots of folks, not just a few folks, is that they're going to have their way and they don't care what we think. And it doesn't do us any good to go up there. You know, I'll talk to them, try to get folks to come up and speak with me. I don't want to be the only voice there. And they'll say it doesn't do any good. They don't pay any attention to what, you know, the constituents say, it's already decided. Now, I went, there was three, not going to brag on me, but there was three roads out of Normandy that were blocked the other night when I tried to get there. I had to go trees down across the roads and everything else. But I was bound and determined, I was at least going to go and say I didn't agree with the way they put all that together. And I don't agree with it. I think it's a very, very poor way to legislate, is to put all that together in one bundle. Those things should stand on their own. And they might have. No, if you, not one amendment, not one thing I noticed in the meeting was ever to do away with a single one of those projects. It was just to get bids and do them correctly.
Yeah.
Well, I think that ought to be just routine. I would have got fired for presenting to corporate a $6 million project without even a bid or any, you know?
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
I agree. And, you know, you talked about corporate. There is a way that government can be structured a lot like business. And I think that any successful business has a plan and processes in place.
Has to.
And I know personally, being in the corporate world, that once you break those processes, it heads you down a path of disaster. I also believe that there is a perception that there is a group of people that think that they know more than everyone else. And it frustrates me, it makes me, actually, it makes me angry. I would all my heart believe that we as elected officials are representatives and that's what we should be. And I believe that we all should work together for the better of our entire county. So what I have seen since I've been in office has been a little bit disheartening. Because I can also see the divide.
Okay, so how does this get corrected, guys?
Well, I'll tell you one way. I believe that whether it's business, government, or whatever, you trust, but you verify. There has to be a level of accountability.
Right.
I believe that what happened the other night, there were a lot of folks that came in and spoke. And that was very encouraging to know that, you know, not only from the calls that I received and, you know, emails, folks may get emails, I get calls and texts mainly. But, you know, there were folks that showed up at the meeting to voice their concerns. I believe that level of accountability helps show everyone that, hey, listen, I put you in office, but we're still going to have a level of accountability to make sure that you are representing my, the constituents' best interest. And I think that's one of the things that we should encourage. You know, like I said at the beginning of this discussion, I'm very thankful for what Shelbyville Now is doing because in order for folks to want to get involved, they also need to be properly informed. Once someone is properly informed, it allows them to make a decision on whether or not, hey, this doesn't seem like it's going in the right direction. I need to call my commissioner, I need to call the county mayor, I need to call whoever's in charge of a specific issue. But I believe that accountability is one of the key things that we need to encourage here in Bedford County.
Okay, so that accountability is a part of the process of correcting things. So how do you get there? How do you get the accountability? I think the ultimate accountability is for the citizens of Bedford County to help hold you accountable, hold the mayor accountable, hold everybody that's in service of the public, hold them accountable. So where is that avenue? Where is that process?
Well, it has to be in the voting booth, right?
Okay.
You got to. I mean, if you just keep voting for the same people and they have the same attitude, you're going to get the same result. I mean, you know, you dig in the same hole with the same shovel, you're going to get the same dirt. I mean, it doesn't matter, you dig how you want to.
That's very observant, okay? I hadn't heard that before.
I used to dig post holes for $2 apiece when I was in high school with regular old post hole diggers. So, you know, I know something about digging holes, but that's what you're going to do. And it's sad. That was what I left that meeting with more than anything else the other night. It was just, I just felt bad, I felt sad.
Yeah.
I felt like I had actually watched our United States Congress trying to pass a law. That's what I felt like.
Yeah.
And that's a shame for our county. See, those people, a lot of those people there, they're on the commission, I know and have known for years. And they're good people, they're not bad people. These are not, we're not talking about evil people up there doing that. We're just talking about people that I think have gotten off on the wrong path. And that's why I said we go back to some of these presidents that worked back here, worked a little better here, and look here what we can do and get this stuff done. And I think they, in their mind, actually feel like they're doing stuff that's good for the county.
Right.
Now, I don't think it is, I don't think it's good to legislate like that because of what it leads you into that you can do.
Right.
And I think when you're talking about checks and balances, someone had the vision to set up committees and things to do this and do it correctly. And that is a check and balance.
And they wrote bylaws.
And they wrote bylaws to go by. And they have rules and, listen, I can't, I need to go buy him a cake or something to be fair because he really did a good job. That was the one highlight of the whole meeting. And of course, you guys came back and raised up some issues and tried to discuss, but they wouldn't let any discussion go on, I mean, really. So I do have to do something nice for Biff, I don't know what, at least thinking.
He's highly respected.
He is, everybody thanks a lot of him.
I look up to him and he's one of those, he's one of those individuals, when Biff speaks, you just stop.
People.
And you listen.
Right.
So I definitely appreciate, I appreciate him, I appreciate his stance. And I think that there's a level of discernment that people have. And I think that people, once they're informed and you have the right information, I believe that most people have a level of discernment to say, you know what? Something just don't, it just don't pass the sniff test. So I believe that we should do everything that we can to make sure that folks are informed. That's one of the reasons why I have my Facebook page is I try to keep it updated.
You do a good job.
I appreciate it. I try to keep people updated and informed. That way, if they have a question, they can call me. You know, I'll share, this was an encouraging moment. But as I was, as I was sitting there, I noticed that my phone continued to buzz, 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 buzz. And I guess you would probably imagine that messages were coming through. So I was able to afterwards go back and read a lot of those messages, all those messages. But one in particular was someone that's not in my district. And it was just very encouraging to hear her say, you know, thank you for standing up for what many of us feel. So I believe in order for that to take place, we as commissioners have to do our job to inform our constituents of what's going on. And then vice versa, the constituents have to make a conscious effort to want to be informed.
Yeah.
So whatever your avenue would be, whether it's Shelbyville Now or hopefully it's Shelbyville Now, or reaching out to your commissioner directly, straight out of the horse's mouth, I encourage people to get involved.
I think it's critical for these representatives to actually have some interaction like you're doing with your Facebook. And I know there's some others that do, but some don't. And some won't respond to an email. I think that that's the ultimate show of respect to me. I mean, I send an email and you're not going to, not going to say anything back whatsoever. Josh, I know you have tried to interact.
I have, yeah. I've emailed a couple of times on this situation, the whole commission, and got very little response, which is unfortunate, even for my own commissioners. So I did get one email from one of my commissioners on the, on the two that I sent. But I think going back to one thing that Mr. Finch said, it, it's important for a lot of people. I see a lot of comments of people that say, there's nothing I can do. They've just, they've already thrown up their hands and given up and say the system is, you know, it's too broken, we can't fix it. No, we weren't successful Tuesday night on getting the vote to turn out a certain way, but we raised awareness. And at the city meeting a couple of weeks before that, the constituents were successful on a zoning issue on Jennings Lane. So I would say keep showing up, keep coming out there and, and making your voice heard. The biggest statement you can make is being there in person. And I know everybody's busy and everybody's got their life going on. But if you see something that is important to you, show up and speak about it. Even if you don't speak, even your presence being there makes a difference to those commissioners, those city councilmen. They, they see those faces out in the crowd and say, hey, maybe I should pay more attention to what's on the agenda tonight. There's clearly people that are concerned about it.
Right, Joe, you mentioned something earlier when you were digging your hole there. You, you were talking about, that's who you elect, that's what you got, so you want to change it, that's what you've got to.
You've got to do, you understand that if, if there had been one vote switched last night, Tuesday night, one vote switched, we could have done the amendments. One vote switched, we could have, we could have stopped the, the big vote and voted on individual projects.
Yes.
One vote, we need one vote.
Talking about the election and going to vote, 29,000 registered voters in Bedford County, that's what we have. The last election that elected commissioners, I think we had about 43, 4,400. Josh, do you know those numbers? It wasn't very many.
It was a very small percentage, yes, especially county elections in particular, they're held on and off year. There's no presidential or anything else on the ballot. So you've got to show up just to vote on your county officials. And if you don't show up to vote, I mean, your voice isn't heard at all.
One other thing, guys, I think there needs to be some educating done. I, I, I've talked to several people that live in the city limits of Shelbyville that don't understand that they have county commissioners. And that's alarming to me.
Yes.
That we haven't educated our folks enough or they haven't taken the time enough. And I think there needs to be a major push toward educating people how the system works. And I think that might be one of our goals as individuals, talking to our family members or whatever. But I think we need to get the word out, hey, if you live in the city, you have county commissioners. I, I, it's, it's amazing to me.
Right. It, it's like, you know, the, the city and the county now have got a lawsuit.
Right.
And I remember back in the day when, when they sued over the ambulance committee, ambulance service, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
They sued each other over, I called each of my commissioners, I lived in the city at that time. I called each of my commissioners and each of my councilmen and I said, please quit suing yourselves. You know, you're suing me, I'm, I'm paying for you to sue and I'm paying for you to sue. I said, surely you guys can work this out without a lawsuit. And I think it goes back to what we were talking about a while ago. It almost gets into a personal, I, I've got to get this done and I'm going to get it done. And if it hurts you, it's too bad.
Yeah, and then in the process.
The, the taxpayer pays for all of it.
And we all get hurt.
And it, and it hurts everyone, that's, that's the deal.
Well, another, you're right, Mr. Finch, I also, I believe that, you know, unfortunately, unless some things are corrected, what happened the other night kind of sets the precedence that, you know, it could possibly happen.
Right.
Again, and I know that it was brought up by another commissioner, well, isn't the finance committee a committee? It is.
Sure it is.
And I believe that the others are just as important and they serve their purpose. As, you know, these, these are the bylaws that I received when I, when I was elected. I keep these with me at all times in my case. And they're here for a reason and we need to follow those. So my challenge to the commissioners is, is going to be, let's, let's make sure that we adhere to our rules and to our chairman. You know, there's, there, there may be some times where things get a little hairy, but we have to keep that order. You know, in the bylaws, it talks that you have to raise your hand to be recognized. And, and I, I believe that we just need to, we need to stop, we need to autocorrect and we need to make sure that we follow these processes that are in place because they're, they're, they're here for a reason. Another thought that I had.
Well, that was my biggest concern about the whole meeting the other night. It wasn't that the projects, I mean, you might agree on one project, I might disagree on that project. We can, we can work that out if, you know, if we're working together.
That's right.
And I've had to do that and, and, you know, in corporate life, you, you have to do that.
In all aspects of us, you really have to.
Oh, and church life, anything else, yeah.
Your wife.
Right. Yeah, I know how to work that out, you know, if I'm going to eat.
So you've got leverage.
But, but if, if you can't work with somebody, then it gets into almost a personality contest. And I, I just, I really hate to see those things tied together, that, that bundling. The whole, if, if you guys had voted and approved every single one of those projects and, and first I'd have been concerned because you didn't have bids. I'd have talked to you about that because I think you, I don't believe you borrow money without being, without knowing what something is going to cost.
I agree.
You can't know that without a bid.
I agree.
I don't care, I, I guess, you know, I guessed one time on the electrical stuff at Jostens, I missed it by 50%. We, we were going to do a big expansion. I took what I'd spent two years before, multiplied it by 1.25 and missed it by 50% what it cost because conduit and stuff had gone up that much in two years. So I thought I was an expert, I'd done it a number of times. So when you get one guy who makes a decision for the whole county and he says, yeah, I think it'll just be, and I'm not knocking anybody, I'm just saying, if you asked me and I said, oh, I think it ought to cost $2 million, I might be off by $6 million. I don't know what I'd be off because it, if, it, till you get a bid, you don't know what it's going to cost.
Right.
Now, I think we should have had bids on those. But if we had had bids and it'd gone through the committee and everybody had said, I want to, I want to pass every one of these and passed 18,000, it would have been fine to me. You know, I'd have gone home and felt better about the whole thing. I was really disappointed when I got home. I told my wife, I said, that may be the last time I go back. I said, I'm just, you know, you're just up there taking people's time.
And don't let it be because we need you.
I'm here today, I am, I am here today. And I will try to encourage people to do that because I do think that helps. And like you said, Jennings Lane thing, it was a house full and, and the, you know, they, they voted it the right way, so.
Yeah, well, guys, in days ahead, I know this, soon there will be committees meeting and one will be about the rules.
Sure.
And, you know, is there anything at that level that could change? Maybe a recommitment to what we're doing here? Is there, is there anything behind the scenes like that? Well, it's not really behind the scenes, they're, they're public. Do you think anything will happen like that, Commissioner?
I, I know that I personally plan to, to talk about it. I believe that Commissioner Farrar, who, you know, we've spoken about several times during this discussion, I, I obviously haven't spoken to him since that, that meeting. But I would probably safely assume that he's going to bring it up. So my goal is to respectfully and politely allow that committee to have a discussion. I would hope that that would be brought up and I'm sure that it will. If it's not, then I plan to surface that question and start the discussion there in that committee.
Josh, you got anything? I, I know you're sitting over there with a lot of stuff going.
Nothing else, I mean, I just hope, yeah, Tuesday, you know, all the commissioners pretty much show up to those committee meetings. So hopefully there's a lot more civil discussion Tuesday night and they can work through some of these issues because they, they're all in these seats for two more years, so they've got to work together for the next 24 months.
Now, we're going to have one that's moving away.
We're going to leave, and there will be a vote.
What does that process look like, by the way? This is very interesting because this is a vote on, on the commission. This is a representative, what does that process look like, commissioners?
Well, it's my understanding that the commission would nominate individuals to fill that seat and then it would be voted on. If, if you, if you remember back several years ago, before I was elected, there was an individual that nominated, that nominated me. And then here we are.
Yes, it was a panic.
Yeah, and I believe that this is, I, I believe then that, that folks knew that I was a pretty conservative fellow. But anyway, I didn't, didn't make that, I didn't make that vote that night. And, but the, the folks of District One, thankfully, I say that sincerely, thankfully, thankful to them that they trusted me to, to now serve them in District One. But it'll be a nomination process and, and then the commission will then vote to, to allow that person to take that.
Now, I, I know that Commissioner Sanders just made this public Tuesday, but I've already been hearing it for two weeks and I've already heard names floating around of potential replacements.
Me too.
How does that happen?
I heard that in Normandy.
You heard that all the way over there?
I heard that in Normandy.
Almost to Tallahhoma.
Almost to Tallahhoma and I didn't know that, I didn't even know who they were talking about. They were talking about the, I didn't know who was leaving, but I did know who was asking for the job.
Yeah, it's life in a small town.
Yeah, okay.
Where it gets out quick.
I believe that, and Josh, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it was mentioned that it was encouraged that those nominated would go to the Rules and Legislative Committee.
Yeah, they'll have a chance to talk about them at Rules and Legislative. As far as the actual process, next month at the commission meeting, nominations can come from the floor, they could get as many as 17 nominations. Every commissioner could nominate a different person, but that won't happen. But there'll be, a few will put forth some names and then they'll vote until they get down to one person that draws the majority of the vote.
Well, I'm just going, I'm just going to throw this out here, will one person get 10 votes? Or will it be scattered, do you think? This is just an opinion, in my opinion, I think we're going to have one person get 10 votes.
I think it'll be 10 on the first vote, if you want to know what I think.
So my, my goal is to, to, to hopefully get to know the individuals so I can cast an honest vote. I mean, again, we're, one of the things that just discourages me a little is this is not a, this is not a game of monopoly money. This is, this is real life.
Oh, yeah.
You know, this is, this is, this is people, these are people involved with real money, you know. And so I, I take that very seriously, whether we're filling a spot on the commission or, or whether we're voting on whatever. And that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do, yeah.
When, when you elect someone and you give them the power to take money from people by force, you have the power to take money from people by force. Because if you don't, you take their house. I mean, if they don't pay their property tax, you eventually take their stuff.
It's called their levy taxes.
That's exactly right. And you give people that authority, to me, that's almost like a sacred trust. I, I never felt like when I was spending someone else's money, even as a manager at Jostens, I felt like I was doing that on the behalf of the people that worked for me.
Right.
Not, not that I was doing it because I needed, you know, recognition or anything else. I was managing something that belonged to someone else. And I was much more careful with that than I was my own money, than I would be my own money because it didn't belong to me, it was somebody else's. And I wanted, I wanted them to know how it was going. I wanted, I wanted to sit down and talk to people and tell them what I was going to do with your money. This is your money and I'm dealing with it. That's the part I think we're missing somehow and I don't, I don't really know how to get there.
Well, there's a lady sitting out in the county right now, her name might be Betty Smith. Okay, I don't know, there might be a Betty Smith sitting out there. It's probably living on a farm with some land and she's having a property tax problem because she has to come up with this lump sum of money every year to pay her property taxes and she's living on social security. She either has to make a choice to not have the gutters repaired, not have the air conditioning fixed or maybe not skip some meals to pay her property taxes. We've got to be able to look those people in the eyes.
Right.
And say, I'm spending your money wisely. And if every commissioner did that, I think we would see an entirely different ballgame.
That's right.
I, I like that analogy because that's a true analogy. I, I can name names for ladies like that. And they and their husband, she and their husband bought this property years and years ago, in the late 60s, maybe the 70s. Now, husband's gone, half the income's gone and here we are and we've got a either, a choice of either selling our land, getting rid of it, that may have been in the family two or three generations, to pay the taxes, you've got to pay the taxes. So it's her money that you're dealing with, it's, it's very important, I, it's.
And, and, and as that, as those people look back on their life and they see where this is, I've been let down by government at every turn. They told me I was going to have enough security at the end of my life with paying in all these social security taxes and I won't have enough. And then it, on this end of life, they're getting hammered with property taxes in their county and their local government. So there's a, that trust you're talking about, it, it's legitimate, it's out there. Well, guys, I think it's time for us to wrap up and, and I really appreciate you, Mr. Finch, coming down and giving us your take on things. And Josh, again, as always, adding to the numbers and the facts, it's always important to base our conversation on facts and truth.
Yes.
And I appreciate you being here with us. And again, Commissioner, you bring a vantage point that we all don't get to see. And thanks again for giving us your input and, and thanks for the conversation, guys, it's been fun. And it's been enlightening and I hope people out there will take something from this and hopefully that will start a conversation of how maybe things can improve here in Bedford County.
Yeah, thank you for putting it out there.
All right, and thanks for watching, guys. We'll be back again real soon with another edition of Conversations, thanks for watching.